Up with a marketing budget to implement these programs we're thinking about?
I would say yes if this was going to be something that we were applying to city vehicles, to uniforms, but when we're using it in communication campaigns, it's a matter of, it's an electronic intellectual property that we've already purchased. It's a sunk cost. And so it would be our communication coordinator who would find ways to utilize that in communications materials.
And on business cards and things like, I mean, where would we go with it? Would it be on letterhead? Would it? I'm just wondering.
You know, we haven't crossed that border yet. I wanted to see if there was any attraction for adopting it in any way. But as I said, at this point, I had only conceived of it being used for communications and marketing. But when it comes to something that would have our official city seal on it, such as a business card, such as letterhead, I did not at this point anticipate changing over to that.
So my, we just took a hard right turn here. I thought this exercise was, we were talking about our logo, a tagline that we would present. If we're not putting this in our business cards, we're spending a lot of money on not, on a marketing campaign. I mean, honestly, I mean, this is, what they're doing is trying to come up with corporate guidelines. And so, and I would disagree in that, you know, if we're just gonna use, you know, we just use this on, on marketing, whatever we come up with, we need to trumpet that across our letterheads, our business cards, whatever it might be. If we do a seal, well, it needs to be part of those guidelines. It doesn't have to be exactly that. It could be something different, but it needs to be related. And that's, and that's part of what this process is. This is a, there are corporate visual guidelines that you want to create and create continuity throughout the entire process. Because if it's disjointed, that, that just, it's awkward. And people make snap decisions based on those things. And it's shallow and it's silly, but it's true. It is. So if, and if we, if we have a budget of what we had for this, and all of a sudden we decide that, well, we're just gonna use this for a marketing campaign, whoo, that's...
That, that's not what I understood. I think branding goes across everything.
Yeah.
But...
I want to put in, I would not, with a negative reaction of our first responders, I would not contemplate putting this logo on anything having to do with our first responders.
Well, then that says a lot right there.
Yep.
That says a whole lot about this.
But the intent, the intent when we started this two years ago was to do what Scott said. It'd be everywhere. There wasn't gonna be a separate seal and a separate logo for marketing.
Well, it was a brand exercise. The logo is one piece of the entire brand and it should be all...
Dan, and then you...
That's actually what I was gonna say. What is the difference between a seal and a logo? And did we need to include visualizing what it would look like on the side of a cop car? There's, there's part of me that when I, when I see our existing seal on the podium on the side of a cop car, I think Batavia. When I see it on my business card as an alderman, I think Batavia. I'm fine with updating it. And that's what I thought that we were doing. This is not what I envisioned for my business card. This is not what I envisioned for replacing that podium. And yeah, I recognize that there's this recurring theme about design by committee. I kinda like this one a little better. I like the creativity involved in changing the blades to a letter B. That's actually pretty cool. I see a lake in that, though. I don't see a river because it goes to the horizon and it curves.
Depends on what time of year.
I suppose, but, and then I guess the most important thing that I walk away with is this. A logo or a seal should not have to be explained to me.
Yeah.
I should look at it and I should, and I should immediately know what this is all about. Did I hear this right? Are those, like underneath the letters, or that's supposed to be water? In the word Batavia? I mean, I get it. It feels like it'd be better if it was a more, like, if it was like a sans serif font, you turn it together real nice and give it some punch. But again, I'm only one of 14 votes, so what does my opinion matter? You know? I just wanna know, can I look at this thing on my card? Can I see it? Would I be okay with putting it on the side of a cop car? And would I be okay with replacing what I already agree is to be a fairly stately-looking seal?
Susan?
If, if this were a marketing campaign, if this were Main Street's new direction, if this were the Chamber's new direction, I would be all for it. Because it's very friendly and it's very Main Street-like, but it's not official enough. And I brought that up at the last meeting. And knowing that Main Street and the Chamber and all of those different organizations were part of the steering committee, it totally makes sense to me why they would be in love with this logo. Because this is really what they're all about. And so, but from a city government structure point of view, I would not be able to get behind it unless it truly is just for marketing.
Scott?
So, Dan, what you're, what you're talking about with the logo here and you think Batavia, that's brand equity. That is, that is years of, you know, of people identifying that with what Batavia is, which is great. I mean, and it is. Now, we're deciding we wanna take a little bit of a different look. I love, I love what you guys have done with, with different things. You know, with St. Cloud, brilliant. That was great, that was great stuff. Now, with it, with the first iteration that what I saw, and what I'm not going to do here, I'm not going to design. That is not. I purposely, I'm not gonna do that. Because that's, this is, we hired you guys to do this. Right? So, but I would say, one of the first things I saw when you had the first logo was with the lowercase b. I saw the river. I did. I saw it. And now, I don't necessarily like what, what we've come up with, but I thought it was super creative. Again, I don't wanna take anything away from what you guys have come up with because I really liked that. I don't think it's quite appropriate, in my opinion, for what we need. Okay? I, this is, and my, my point is, this is why we should have had the branding committee review this. We should have had, you know, someone from the, from the police, you know, our chiefs on there to take a look at it. Because we would've gotten feedback in a hurry, you know, on that. So, again, this is, when it comes to this stuff, this is when, you know, the iron pants have gotta be on. Right? And, and we need to talk about, what are the next steps? You know, and if, if the predominance of the council says, hey, we love it, we're gonna go forward, okay, fine. But if not, now, how do we reload?
And I do think we need to have an understanding of what we're gonna do with it. Because that's another part of the process that I think kind of got lost. Alan, go ahead, Alan. I'll get you next here.
You know, the more I marinated on this and kinda finally figured out what I really saw this as, I feel like I'm looking at this and this is a marketing campaign. This is a marketing strategy, not so much a brand. You know, I don't see an iconic logo. I don't see a Rosemont rose on the side of a squad car that immediately when I see that, I know it's Rosemont. You know? Or our current logo on the side of a squad car, you know it's Batavia immediately. You know, when I see the Fox on the side of something in St. Charles, I know it's St. Charles. I mean, that's the kind of brand recognition I think I'm looking for when I see this. Now, yeah, I can see all the things within the design that's out there, but again, color of it is really important. And from the exercise that I went through with BATV, when it's not colored, when it's an outline, or when it's just a logo that you're using, you have to think about how it's going to be used, what it's gonna be on, and does it really make sense in all the different applications to become now your brand? And not just a marketing campaign. I mean, I like the idea of this. I like the fact that in different marketing ways and different applications, this really makes sense. You know, to be able to use that to show the total involvement of this community in so many different ways, this fits it perfectly. But is that really what our brand is? You know, and I think this is one of the things, 25 or 30 years ago, City never thought about branding itself. It was a logo to show what the city was. That's all it was. You know, it didn't have any implication on, gee, we're gonna take that picture of Fermilab and the windmill and go out and sell that to people to tell them why they need to move to Batavia. Now, we're looking at this and we're thinking about, okay, this has gotta attract people. This has gotta attract businesses. This has to be something that draws people in. That, to me, is just marketing. And I think we got away from the fact that when we started this, we were talking about, okay, we really need to identify, does the brand of Batavia, the old logo, and the City of Energy, does that really represent, you know, the 2020 or 2030 Batavia? That we've tried to envision with what we're doing with Streetscape and what we'd like to see downtown? I think the idea that's there with Powered by Neighbors says what I think is the reality of what this town is today. But I don't know that that's a brand. And that's the struggle that I've had the last week or so thinking about it.
Do you mean, when you say that, do you mean, does it attract, will it attract people to wanna come here?
I think it will, but that, to me, is a marketing strategy. It's not, okay, that's Batavia. It's Powered by Neighbors. That's not what people think of when they think of a city. They either think of its history, they think of where it's located, you know. You think of Pittsburgh, I think of Three Rivers. You know, I mean, that's just the way it strikes me is, I look at this and all I can see and all I get out of it, the more I dig into it, and actually listening to people that I've talked to outside of the city that have no connection to the Fox Valley, that have no connection to Batavia, they look at this and they say, that's a really cool marketing strategy. If you guys are trying to market certain aspects of your town, you could use that in so many different ways, you know, for your business district, for your school district. I mean, there's so many things you could use that for. But as a city logo and a tagline, does that really represent what you wanna try to make your city out to be? And that's the thing I've struggled with the last week or so. You know, and I've read through it and I've gone over it, and I've gone back and read all the crazy comments on all the different social media things. And I think that's, to me, what I take away from some of this is when people's comments are, well, what does that really mean? Or what is that really trying to represent? That's what I get out of it is, I don't see it being a brand that, you know, somebody that drives through Batavia remembers, oh, yeah, that's the one with the, the B windmill one in their logo. I mean, that just, I just don't see that even after a year or two of being public with it, that that's gonna be something that people are gonna, it's gonna stick in their mind. And that's been my struggle.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Well, my opinion is if we accept the logo, we gotta be all in for everywhere. Couple things. I fell in love with the campaign. I did like that. I think we could tweak the logo a little bit. I also thought that this is something that every organization in Batavia could get behind. It would kinda eliminate some of the signs we have. We have different signs for the library, the school district, the park district, Batavia Main Street. I thought this was something that everybody could get behind. So I kinda liked that aspect of it. Again, we could do a few tweaks to the logo. As far as our current logo, I think if you asked 80% of people in the town of Batavia, they would not see Fermilab. So, again, my opinion is branding and marketing is repetition. If this thing gets repeated over and over again with all the different organizations with our town, it will become our brand. I mean, it will become popular. We're not, that's not repetition there. I mean, we got a picture of it on the squad cars and then on the fire trucks, but we're not marketing that. So that's my opinion for what it's worth.
Okay.
So I, I think every, I think there's a lot of great comments here and there's a lot of validity to what everyone is saying. And I think that just from, from where we're approaching it is, we're standing five years in the future and consulting with you and collaborating to bring you there. Instead of antiquating the process and making a brand a city seal, you would be disappointed if we gave you a city seal and you put it out everywhere and everyone said, that's just a seal. That's not a brand. And so it's, it works the other way. Your comment about Rosemont is great, I mean, what is Rosemont known for? Well, it's in the name, right? I mean, that was a, they kinda cheated there, right? So I suppose that's, it's pretty easy. What, but, but it makes it harder when your name is Batavia. People wanna know immediately, what's the history there? What are you about? I don't know any other town in the area that has more windmills than you have. And so we couldn't throw that away. And it's, it's here. It's right down here. It's, and it's very similar. There's not a lot of difference. So to put this next to that and to show the comparison, people who didn't really see the windmill exactly, or might not have seen the building itself, Fermilab, will now start to see where we were and where we're going. So we didn't wanna present to you a contemporary brand, or a logo, or a city logo. We wanted to present to you something that's five years out, that you can grow into and that you could feel good about later, not now. It's not, doesn't feel good to change. It's gonna hurt. And it's, that sounds really consultant of us to say, but it does, it's the truth. In the matter, and I think St. Cloud's brought up a lot, and the reason why everybody loves St. Cloud is, that is 10 years in the future. Because it is not a city. In fact, we did the St. Cloud Greater placemaking. That was not even a brand. That was placemaking for the whole city. That's on the Mississippi, a giant river, and we never once referenced the river. And they are more happy than they've ever been, and they're embracing the river more than they ever have. But St. Cloud was about more than just where they were and where they're located. They're about a spirit, and they're about conviction, and they're about greater. And they wanna make everything greater. And that's why we all love it. In fact, if you look at pictures of City Hall in St. Cloud, the logo that's up there is City of St. Cloud and the big greater sign. There is no seal, no brand. They've ripped them off of everything and thrown them away. Mayor Kleis is 10 years ahead of everybody. That's where we wanna take you. That's, that's the work we wanna do. We win awards all day long. We don't care about that. What we wanna do is make you all happy. And we know what it takes to make people happy in cities and towns. So that, we're doing our best.
The one thing, and Alan, specifically to your point about the brand too, and this is, this is Ms. Rude's branding class, okay? Do you remember what we talked about earlier?
Use the mic so we get you on tape.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always think I'm loud enough. My husband tells me I'm loud enough. But anyway, the one thing to remember is, the logo and the tagline are brand elements. They are not the whole brand. If you remember the brand architecture, that comes with messages and proof points and the personality and the vision and all those things. So you've got that brand architecture to guide how the city presents itself. The other thing I would say too is, we've worked with communities whose seals are 100, 150 years old and they will never change. But what changes is the brand. So, because that seal is, it's, it's also a legal issue. That is what goes on legal documents and things like that. And, and there are many communities who keep that for the millennium, you know? But then they, they develop a new brand to express where they are and where they wanna go. So I hope that helps you to understand kind of where all this fits.
Right. I guess my thing is, the perception that is from the other side of this equation is the general public, when they look at something or they think of a brand, they don't think all that other stuff that feeds into it. They just look at it and they see the little tiny red tag that says Levi's on it.
Mm-hmm.
You know? Or they see the Nike swoosh, or they see whatever they see in the brand that they're looking at. They don't look at anything else that's associated with that. So yeah, I think that's on us, that we have to be able to look at it in the totality of it to figure out how we use that. And I guess that's where, in my mind, I see it more as a marketing strategy than how we brand the city.
Can I ask about the timeliness of this brand?
Mm-hmm.
Specifically the font? Do you think that's gonna go, I mean, for me, and I, the fonts, what I, besides, I mean, I just feel like it's not timeless. It doesn't represent, I, I don't know. So I wish you could address that.
Yeah, I mean, I, this font was created six months ago. So it's a brand new font. To me, to us, as we look at brand architecture and what the spirit of all of this that we've all created together is about, is neighbors. It needed to be friendly. It couldn't be that font that you see on the, etched in the stone at the museum, I think I said this last time, in a museum. Because it needed to be something that's approachable, and it needed to be something that had character and a little spirit to it. I can go back...
Do people pay for that? I mean, there's something...
See, over to the right is what's, that font is Futura. And that font was created in 1947. They're sisters.
So, two things. One, I couldn't agree with you more about font. Yes, I did.
A while ago.
Yes. I'm a font freak. So, and, yeah, and you're, you're dead on. It's the, the font which then transforms into your mark or your logo type, because eventually it's gonna get, you know, it's no longer a font. It does need to be approachable. And wherever we end up, you're 100% correct. But just to take a step back, and I have powered this down before about a brand. A brand is not a logo. It is not a tagline. It is not an element. It is the feeling, it is defined by the people that are pushing back to you. It is what their experience is with you. That is your brand. You cannot dictate your brand. You can only try and manage it. But it's like nailing Jello to a wall. You can't do it. It is, you can only try and manage it. So your brand is what people feel. So when you say Walmart, when you say Disney, when you say Donald Trump, they all have their own distinct brands. And it's, it's unique to different people. So it's that period, you can only try and help manage it. And that's what they're trying to do here. And it's tough. It's not easy. It's not easy. So when we talk about branding, as a branding exercise, we're simply trying to steer it, to manage it, to try and, you know, make it as friendly and, and approachable and engaging as possible.
But can I follow up on the brand comment? I just meant this approachable kind of brand, new brand that doesn't really have a stately presence. Will people pay for that? Will that attract people to Batavia to invest their money in our town? That's what I'm asking.
That's, that's a good question.
I, well, go to Marty, then.
Yeah, I'm, I just wanna point out that we're thinking about this stately logo, and it's been mentioned several places. I would challenge actually your memory, because it is in none of those places that we have said. We're seeing logos in our minds on places that it doesn't exist. On the police car? It's not on the police car. The police car is the, the Illinois police badge. The logo that's on the back of that is working for your quality of life. The swoosh that's on the car, and this is going to your, this is my wheelhouse. You don't design logos for how it looks on the police car or the fire truck, because those are custom jobs which cost a lot more. No agencies, unless you're flush like Rosemont, do specific things. Most entities will have their own logo. The one that's on the fire truck is the Batavia Fire Department's logo. For me, it's kind of important because we're saying that certain logos are on there, but certain logos that those people, those first responders have, we don't pay attention to what their logos are.
That's good.
It's the police logo and it's the fire logo. And to throw those out and to not even recognize that those are, hurts my soul a little bit because I'm like, we're not trying to put that on there, but we're seeing things that don't even exist. We're thinking that...
Well, Susan brought up a good point. We were, we were shown a police car with this logo on it.
We were shown the police car, but it was just said that the logo that's on the cars is that. It's not. It was said. It was said that the city seal is on the police car. It's not. And we're seeing things in our mind about where we think we've seen it, because that's our perspective. Mike had said, it goes to repetition, repetition. We just said that it's in several locations that it's not. So our minds are tricking us.
So, but then, can you address that bit about what, what does a logo need to be attractive to people to come and invest in the town? I mean, are there certain levels where people say, that's a lightweight logo and I don't feel that town's value is worth the town to the north that looks a little bit more established, like it's been around for a while? It's lasting.
Yeah.
And this doesn't look lasting to me. This looks like it's new. So I don't know. Is, I mean, is...
Again, I guess I go back, as far as the lasting and new, I go back to what you have entrusted in us and hired us to do is to move you forward and not...
Well, I mean, you can do that with this. People will invest because they will feel that this is attractive and it means we're, we're valuable.
Right. But I, but I think there's, there's a lot of things that we can all point to that have been introduced to this world that took several years for people to get... Your favorite album, the first time you played an album, that you're like, I don't think I like this. The second and third time, I think it's a little better. And all of a sudden, you're humming that to you, you cannot forget it. But that, those musicians that created that album were way out there, and they knew it and they could care less, because they want, they knew you would finally catch up at some point. And that's what we hope that people do.
And some of those songs I still sing. Some of them I've long forgotten.
That's, but how many years is that? I mean, we, we hope this works at least 10, 15 years, but we're talking about, I mean, you're a young person, but I mean, this, you know...
Well, certain songs last for hundreds of years.
Right. And that's, and that's our goal. And we actually, you know, as far as our track record goes, we create brands that are still around. I mean, they're, we don't put something out there that's gonna last a couple of years or that's ephemeral. We're trying to create something that's grounded, first of all, grounded in research and, and grounded in what we know about your town. We talked to real people. We, we took online surveys of real, we talked, most of you here. And there was a consensus, and we synthesized that consensus. And I think that as far as the character of this, whether this is a brand, or a stately city seal, or a logo, or a, you know, just a visual representation of a town, we subscribe to a lot of groups, American Planning Association, there's a lot of, there's a, there's a lot of work going on now in what's called placemaking. And if you look at, if, even if you go on Pinterest and look up placemaking or city brands, you will be shocked to see how few seals are out there and how now everything is following what we're doing here, which is that blending of marketing, branding, and city presence, and official city business, and it's all coming together. And that's what's in the next five years. In the next five years, everybody will be doing it. We wanna do it for you first, before Geneva jumps on, before St. Charles jumps on. And I, let's pull up those logos. I think they don't even come close. Honestly. I mean, that's, that's our opinion. We looked at it. We've researched it.
Well, I wasn't advocating for the seal, but anyway, I kinda...
But, but to that point, right now, we're, we're, we're just wrapping up research in the city of DePere, Wisconsin, which is a suburb of Green Bay. And we talked with the police chief, and they have their patch with the really, and it's actually a very nice city seal, the City of DePere seal. And we're gonna take that into consideration. And it may not change. They, they may not ever change that, which at that point is great, because that's such a beautiful seal, if you look it up. It's absolutely, it's very colorful, it's gorgeous. But we're okay with that, because I think Laura was sort of starting to talk about that there are some things that need official, a sort of official look to them. There are some things that do need to have that stately appearance of a seal, you know, to make it official. And I think Mary Ann was also talking about that it's a legality, that it's a legal thing, that you have to trademark something that represents the official business of a particular municipality. And we respect that. We're not saying throw everything out. We're not saying you have to brand the, the police cars. We're saying, what if? And then we have the conversation. We're not dictating any of this. We're just giving you our opinion and our expertise. We're sharing that because we've been asked to and we've been hired to do that. And that's where we'd like to take you is five years out.
Dave?
Couple of things I want to point out, Lucy. One is it's 8:10. Yeah. You've been trying to get to strategic planning for quite some time. And I think it was Scott that said at the last minute that there's no reason we shouldn't be able to come up with some type of discussion, decision within an hour-
Okay.
-on the branding and the logo. So, whatever you guys want to do, you can do. We can continue this discussion or we could not continue it. But that being said, I want to give you a couple of my comments, my thoughts on this. And that is, it's interesting because some of the, sometimes we, you know, there's 14 of us here, and sometimes some people say they hear a lot from people and other people don't hear much at all. And tonight, I'm kind of hearing, I'm going to say it, I know I can't talk about age, but I'm going to say it. The younger generation seems to have not heard too much on this one where I've heard a lot. And vice versa on other subjects where I don't hear much of anything and you guys, the younger generation hears a lot. I'm probably the oldest alderman here beside the mayor.
Which generation are you putting me in, Dave?
I'll put you in the younger generation.
You're in the middle.
But, you know, I, as Marty said, you know, Marty one time said, you know, well, I go to all the soccer games and that's where I see a lot of people and you don't do that. You're right, I don't. But yet I go to the Performance Arts Center on a Friday evening for their activities out there. And for some reason, it seems like that's the older generation in town that goes there. And unfortunately, the younger generation doesn't go too much because there's a lot of really cool things there. But regardless, so I'm hearing from the older generation on this. And I got to tell you, you know, I'm going to stand up for them on this one and I think you kind of know where I was at on this anyway, but I was willing to listen and willing to really put some deep, serious thought into it, and I have. But yet the older generation is saying there's nothing wrong with what we have. And, you know, I've tried to play the devil's advocate and I say, well, that's true, but sometimes there's nothing wrong with the restaurant you have, but yet if they open a nice, new, shiny restaurant, you'd like to go there better. Because people like new and fresh, you know? And they, you know, we debate it back and forth and they, well, yeah, you're probably right, but no, there's nothing wrong with what we have. Don't change it. Well, what if we just clean it up a little bit? What if we put some color to it is what I'd say, you know? Why? Why? What's wrong with what we have? So, the people I'm hearing from are saying there's nothing wrong with what we have. Now, you get into the whole discussion of a seal versus marketing, that's a whole new discussion that wasn't supposed to be a part of this process. It can become part of this process if you guys wanted to, but it wasn't supposed to be. So, I'm just going to kind of back off on this and say it's up to you guys what you want to do because you know where I'm at on this one. And my response on this one is don't change anything.
Okay.
Can I just add one?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'll try to make it quick. But one of the things that I like about it, and I'm not countering you, the beauty of opinions is we all have one and there are none wrong. The thing that I liked from a branding standpoint, the thing that hit me four or five years ago when Beardsguard came to town and they stood up there and they said, they walked in, what did they like about Batavia? They said it's Mayberry meets Wicker Park. And that stuck with me. And I see kind of a bridging that gap. There's a reference towards history and a simpler life, yet it's newer and updated and cool at the same time. But I just wanted to bring up that reference because it's something that stuck with me and I always liked it from a branding standpoint. I think that's awesome. What about the process of bringing this back to the steering committee and trying to do clear things up? Because we're never going to-
I think that is probably a good idea. Would you, what do you think, Scott, since you're on? After maybe we revisit strategic planning? Can we put this on hold?
Can I ask for some clear direction on what outcomes you would like to see from the steering committee? Because I don't want there to be the perception that the steering committee is making decisions or getting too far down the road because there's certainly, Susan, you expressed that sentiment. So, if we bring the steering committee back to work with Spark on refining the concepts that we have here, but maybe if we set a specific time when that, then there's, we are going to come back to the council? Would that be?
Yeah. I mean, in terms, maybe a couple more options, maybe a couple more taglines. I think we also need to outline what we're going to use this for. I mean, I think I would, I really thought that it would be on the business cards, on the letterhead, that it would be, if we picked a font, this is the font we're going to use.
And what about the first responder vehicles and uniforms? I'm concerned about that because these are paramilitary organizations-
Well, that, I mean-
-where things like this are like the Marine Corps logo that I don't think is ever going to change.
Marty brings up a good point. They have their own.
Yes.
But-
That's not true. 100%.
Sorry. Okay. So, then we have to say, is this a font that we're comfortable using on our city stationary one? Yes.
Just, is part of what you're going to provide is corporate guidelines? A corporate book?
Right. So, part of the, so the balance of the scope is standards for whatever we end up-
Correct.
-with the brand. And that's verbal and visual. Also, in our purview is implementation plan, you know, which we kind of started touching upon here, but based on what we learned here, we can expound on that and put that into play as well. So, that's all part of the scope.
Will you have dollars with that so that we will know what it will cost to implement the plan?
Yeah, everything was all a card in the proposal.
Okay. All right.
But to that point, what they, I'm sorry. That style guide will provide us-
Okay. Got it. I got it.
How we use those fonts.
Okay.
And it may not be, it may not be just this font. I mean, this is, as Scott was saying, this is a logo type, right?
All right. So, that you will get one that will coordinate with it.
Well, I think, I think sometimes, you know-
Or contrast or whatever.
Exactly. That's a good, that's a good way of characterizing it.
But what we should use, you'll make a recommendation on what font you think we should be using for our letterhead or-
For the body of the letterhead. We also would recommend what you, we've even shown some examples of what it would look like in advertising. So, we have, there's probably about five to six different fonts in there. But, you know, we don't all see that because it's not, we don't want you to see that. We don't want everybody to start looking at every font. We want the spirit of it to come to you. We wanted to talk about, are we on with the spirit? And so, it's more about that. And then, once we get into the refinement phase of the brand is where we start to say, in this case, because the type is so small, we would never use this curly type because it would be too hard to read. You know, that sort of thing starts to come into play and that's exhaustive. You know, we talk about every little detail. And so, there's usually not a question as to how this brand is to be used. What to do and what not to do will be illustrated.
Well, there's been a lot of feedback. And I would say the consensus is we're not there yet. That's where I'm taking it. I mean, even those that like it say it could be tweaked a little bit. So, those on the committee, do you think that you can go with the information that you've heard tonight and maybe revisit it after we've worked a little bit more on our strategic plan and our vision?
So, we are putting it on hold. We're not even going to start that portion of it until after the strategic plan is completed?
Well, I don't know how long our strategic plan, I mean, I don't know-
Yes or no? I think it's a yes or no.
Were you asking me? I'd say yes. I advocated for that two years ago.
I got two things. One is there's a couple of people in the audience that may want to speak to this.
Okay.
And the other one is before we go any further, is the consultant's contract exhausted at this point and is this going to cost us more?
I need to speak with the consultants, but I think that they have delivered on all of the aspects that were part of the initial RFP.
Because I think that ought to be considered before, as we make the consideration of what we do in the future.
Yeah. We need to know where we stand.
We also came in slightly under budget. So, we're about $1,500, $1,800 under budget or so from the original $50,000 that was allocated towards this. So, if need be, we're happy to put, you know, if you can, you know, allocate that towards revisions here, we can look at that.
Well, it sounds like there's, even if we accepted this today, there's still work to be done. So, you're not paid in full.
No.
Well, I mean, you have all the standards done? You have the recommendation?
No, 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 no. Yeah. Because we're taking this a step at a time. Like I said earlier, we didn't look at any visual branding until we created, until Mary Ann and I and the team created the brand architecture. Because we don't want to put something together that's not informed by research and reality. So, we generally don't do standards unless everybody signs off or the appropriate committee signs off on this. So, that part has not been built. It's still part of the scope as well as the implementation plan. So, if we've, you know, we're very flexible. This is a creative process. We're very creative as far as where dollars go. If we feel like we want to take some of those dollars away from a full-blown plan and put that towards, you know, something else or bolstering this or doing more research or, you know, culling information from the strategic planning, we're happy to do that as well too. Our goal is to make sure that this is going to take you in the right direction.
Maybe Laura could just put together a summary of what we spent money on and what there is left that's been allocated towards this process to spend one again.
Actually, in my last invoice, when I send invoices, I, everything is line item. So, I think, I believe that Chris has that as far as what you've spent, what's gone on, which phase has been done.
Sorry.
Public.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Laura, you had asked me specifically about-
Process.
The process. And I think that the stakeholders on the steering committee are in love with this. And so, that bothers me because I don't see any big changes coming out of it because they've worked on it for a year. And so, aside from Scott Silvati, they're in love with it. And I would like to see, you know, we talked about powered by community as an alternative. And I think more people could, some more people could get behind powered by community versus powered by neighbors. But again, if it's something that they're in love with, I don't see changes coming out. So, then to take it back to the steering committee, I'm kind of like, well, then why bother?
I kind of concur with you. I feel like the steering committee might come out and come out with exactly which is something that you're not also going to agree with. So, maybe this should be the steering committee for it.
Which is-
And just because it kind of cuts to the chase instead of having this other body who is working on exactly what you're working on here, but they're just a different body. It does not seem like the work that the body, that other body is doing is achieving consensus here.
Well, to speak to the process, I guess, because I've been here long enough to know the process, the old process, when we worked on Streetscape, two council members, three council members sat on that committee, they sat through the meetings. But when it came down to decisions, whether it was, do you like this street light or this street light? Do you want these planters or these planters? It came back to committee or to the city council to make those final decisions because we were the ones who actually spending the money, who had to face our constituents and say, this is why we made the decisions. So, it didn't come to us as just like a package and say, okay, here you go, this is what you need to sell because another committee had decided it for us. So, maybe that is the best way to go is, okay, you know, the steering committee is a part of it and we've gotten it this far, but maybe moving forward, it should come out of the steering committee and come to the actual stakeholders who have to report back to the people that they represent.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Come on up. All the way up.
Yeah. If you could, come on up and give us your name and use the microphone so we get you on tape. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Andy Kenny. I work as an art director in Chicago. And so, I've been following this fairly closely since the original work was presented. And I guess I've just been kind of surprised by the lack of options. And I feel like I've heard that just from the committee kind of discussing this as a whole, that I don't know what the scope of work for this project was, but coming in with just one direction and one tagline, I know there's a lot of strategic work that went into it. But I'm kind of shocked by the lack of options and explorations and knowing that as a brand, and it came up a lot tonight, that there's different applications on, you know, if it's on a squad car, should we be considering that as like a holistic piece? And I feel like right now, kind of looking at it from the brand deck in the context of, you know, just a tote bag or a T-shirt and stuff like that. I know letterhead came up and some of the color options are five color plus options. And I feel like just kind of looking at all these kind of considerations, there hasn't been a lot of documentation and I don't know if I've just been out of the loop. I've only seen what's been on Facebook and one town hall meeting. But I think there just needs to be a lot more breadth, just kind of thinking through this process. And so, just as, kind of as someone in the design community, kind of seeing this work, it feels very, I don't know, isolated in a way. And I would just love for the committee, as you guys are thinking about this, to really keep pushing for exploration for a year in the making. I know just kind of having one option is always tough. So, kind of my comments, just I hope that helps. I've been talking with a lot of my design colleagues too, just how they feel about this as just kind of a structure and a presentation. And I feel like the consensus is that options need to be considered for the breadth of that system, especially for a city such as this. I think we have a rich history. I think we have direction, which I know you guys have spoke to, of wanting to get ahead of it in the future. I think just really trying to help pull that historical piece in, but also, I don't know. I think there could be a lot more exploration. So, I guess those are my two cents. I hope that helps. I'm happy that you all had me up here for a second. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucy, just real quick, they make some of the best candles in town.
Okay.
Sylvia Keppel, 1420 Becker Avenue. Just want to make some comments. The city seal is on the city vehicles. I see it on the side of the trucks as I go down the neighborhood. And so, I do recognize that.
What I was referring to is the actual design itself on the car. There's a sticker on a window, but that's not the design which we were talking about on the actual car.
Yeah. Squad cars, but it's on all the city trucks.
City trucks.
Yeah. Well, on the city trucks.
City trucks it is.
But the concern was about the fire department and the police not wanting it as the design feature on their car, which I understand.
But still, I think the same should hold for the city vehicles on the trucks. It's, I'd rather see the strong logo that we have currently than something that's a little bit fluffier. And when Spark first was hired, I went looking for it because my daughter is graduating this year from NIU in visual communication, graphic design. And so, she was interested. She says, okay, what company is this and who are they? We went looking for a website. They had no website. I couldn't find anything on them. And for a company that prides itself on branding, they should have a fantastic website. And even as late as the fall of this last year, they still did not have a website. And I remember I had emailed, I don't know how many, I had emailed, but I had at least emailed Alderman Brown about that and said, they have no website. And now they have just a recent website and they don't have very much on there. So, when you're talking about all the timeless things that you've done in the marketing, what are some of those examples that have been around for a long time? Because Greater St. Cloud or St. Cloud Greater was just in the last few years. So, what do you have out there that's long-lasting? And then I have more to say, but maybe you could answer that.
Could you answer just for some examples?
I'd be happy to share it with her personally. If you'd like to see what I've done and the accolades and the work that's been done and the comments that have been made on my work, I'm happy to do that.
And I, can I? I just want to say that your proposal that you provided to us had a great deal of that information and examples of other work.
But it's not out there. It's not for other people to view. It's not probably demonstrated anywhere.
I've got a copy for you, Sylvia. I've got a copy for you, Sylvia.
That's my prerogative. That's purely, here, this is a brand-new proposal that I just created. And, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This is not appropriate.
Okay. And also, going back to Alderman Brown's comments, why do we need rebranding? There are a lot of people that like our branding, that we have now, that like our logo and our tagline. I put it out there on nextdoor.com, and you saw a lot of the comments that were out there. To summarize most of their comments, there are three recurring elements. One, there's an attachment to the current logo and tagline. People have a close attachment to it, and a lot of times they get upset when you try to mess with that. Two, there's a concern over the cost of this project and the subsequent changes to vehicles, water towers, and monuments. There are a lot of people that are very concerned with the city spending money. And from that flows three, there's so much local talent with a real feel for the town that we should pull from that local talent instead of bringing in people from the outside. I had talked to the Park District. The Park District, I think, did a fantastic job with their rebranding and their website redesign. And I asked them, who did that? And they said they pulled together people who worked there. They pulled together their ideas, and they actually spent something about around $5,000 for their logo. They spent $19,000 on a website redesign, but it's still, it's about, it's under $25,000 that they spent on their whole project. And their tagline, "Your fun is our business," I think is fantastic and really says what the Park District is about. And I think that came about because the people who worked on it really knew what the Park District was about. So that would be a big plus for pulling from local talent. And we have, with the art community, we have a lot of artists in town. There were over 100 comments between the two posts. Of course, there were some recurrent ones, but there were a lot of people that chimed in. And there were only two positives in the whole bunch. The last one was somebody of those two, one came recently, when they liked the new colors. I agree with the suggestion of using this as a marketing campaign. I think it's a really good marketing campaign with a lot of potential. And you could even drop the neighbors, if you don't like the power by neighbors, to make it open to powered by this business, that business, these people, and just leave the neighbors out of it if you're worried about the neighbors. But as a marketing campaign, even my daughter agreed, she said this is a, would be a very good marketing campaign. But her reaction initially was the same as Mayor Shilky had mentioned, was that when she saw it, she said, what neighbors? Aurora and Geneva? That was her first reaction to it. And I know she's not alone. And finally, I'd like to, so I'd encourage you to, if you're going to go further with this, instead of spending more money, take what they've got here. Work with it, maybe go out to the community, find out what they have to offer. And I'm sure that there's some people that could come out, come up with more revisions or more refinement to this idea. And then the last, I want to end with a quote from, from one of our Batavians, who we are very, very fortunate to have as a Batavian. He is a very, very fine miniature artist by the name of Edward Cook. And he says, "I chuckle at the use of the word rebranding. I was born and raised out west where cattle were often branded. Sometimes a running iron could be used to change a brand, but you know what? It remained the same cow, and that's no bull. There has been some very nice changes downtown, the overly expensive arch not included. The Riverwalk, a new museum expansion, and the street beautification will all help our image. Geneva has been able to turn their town into a destination because they have the street configuration to have many nice restaurants and places to shop. Batavia, because of its downtown manufacturing history, doesn't offer a similar opportunity. However, wouldn't it be nice if instead of a huge apartment complex, there were nice shopping destinations along Wilson and State Street? I wouldn't want to be an alderman. They carry a huge responsibility and for the most part have done an admirable job, but this rebranding issue is questionable. Entering Batavia on Route 31 is a pleasure and shows Batavia as a beautiful town. However, entering Batavia from north or south on Route 25 is not as pleasurable. No new signs or rebranding is going to change that image. It's still the same cow. Change can be good, but as a state, county, community noted for high taxes, taxpayer money needs to be watched and better spent. One alderman stated that the $50,000 spent on research and design for what doesn't appear to be a popular item was budgeted. But where, pray tell, does the money come from for the city's budget?" Thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia. Lucy?
So Laura, do you think you have the direction you need?
No.
Okay. So I don't know, my reaction to your suggestion that this be the committee, I'm not sure that that will work. I think that maybe we need to those, maybe we need some extra people on the committee, maybe we need a new...
It's quite a large committee, and that may have been one of the problems with it. There are two aldermen who serve on the committee. As you mentioned, Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce are on that committee. There are, I think, maybe four, five individuals from staff who are also on that committee. We can reconvene...
Maybe a little more diversity. I mean, I don't know, from different age groups or maybe some artists, you know, that have a sense of this. I don't know, maybe. So, but I think maybe we should finish the strategic planning and then revisit it, perhaps. Is, are we comfortable with doing that? Alan?
I guess my suggestion would be is, do we like where we think this is at or possibly going to go to? Or don't we? I mean, to me, that's the question.
Well, I think that's what we've been talking about. And I don't think we have a consensus that this is what we want. I mean, that's not what I'm hearing. Marty?
I think we need to, like to Laura's point, I give, at some point, we've got to give a little more direction. Do we like this? Yes or no? Do we want them to go back and tweak this? Do we want them to start over? Let's take some votes that way to give...
Okay, yeah.
Because I think we're just kind of like, I don't know. And at some point, just put the foot down and say, this is what we need to do.
Well, but we're not, we're not designers.
Yeah, I don't know what to tell the committee.
We are not designers here. So, but, if, I mean, so I kind of hesitate to go the direction that you just suggested.
I'm not saying about design. I'm saying, do we want to send this to this board? Do we want to send it to the committee? That is a decision that will start pairing, like what we need to do. I'm not talking about sitting here, I like this color, but not that. That's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to give staff and them some concept of not reinventing everything unless that's what we say to do.
Right.
If that's an option and say, we're done with this, we're going back to the drawing board, then let's have that vote and see where we stand that way.
That might be, that might be, that might be a consideration, as the gentleman from the audience has said.
All right, do you want to make that as a motion?
No, because I don't believe in that. Because I think, like what Dave's saying, where this is a 50-50 thing at this point. The minute that we say stick with that, you're going to have half the town that is now going to be upset about that, that we're stale, that we're not moving, that we're not doing anything, that we're, that we're looking too far into the past and not the future. So that will start becoming into everybody's Facebook boxes. And you're going to start having, because like they're saying...
Right, I hear what you're saying. I get, okay, so I'd like to get back to what we've talked about. Let's do strategic planning. Let's finish the strategic planning and then revisit the branding. And maybe then we'll have a clearer idea of the direction we want to go.
That would be my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Scott, I'd like to hear Scott's opinion. I have felt the entire time that we needed to do our strategic planning first. And, you know, I think we have, we have a lot of data points, we have a lot of work put in. I think we need to revisit, I think we need to come back. I said this in August, that we needed to put a pause on this. But, you know, we went forward anyway. So, and I, you know, I think we really should just put a thumbnail on this.
Thumbnail?
A, yeah, a thumb tack. That's what I was looking for. And come, and come back, that would hurt. And come back to it. And I, but just, and just a real quick, and there's a lot of people tearing and saying that, oh, high schoolers could do this. No, they can't. This is, this is, this is serious work. And I'm not taking away from the creativity of high schoolers, but there's a reason why design agencies exist. And there's process. And it's bumpy. And this is a bump. And we'll get through it. We'll get through it. So, but this, we need to act as professionals, and we need to let the people that design this stuff do it. And we can't design by committee. We can't design by community. It doesn't work. So I think, to your point, I think we need to step back, give you more detail, and get back to it.
And I think that's why it's my motion, is because the flip side of that is to just throw it all the way. That is irresponsible of throwing $50,000 away of two years that have been spent. That would be reckless use of taxpayers, just to all of a sudden go, well, that was stupid to spend that money. No, we owe it to them as professionals to say, wait, we're confused at this. The community's confused about it. We need to take a breath, sit back, figure out what our next plan is. Thank you for all of this, but we didn't spend $50,000 for nothing because it's got people talking.
So what we're going to do is, your motion was to put it on hold, and we're going to finish our strategic planning and develop a little clarity. And it shouldn't take that long. I mean, we're not starting from scratch on the planning. And my sense is you've been through this, something like this before, maybe? Not, or you don't have to answer. So is there a second?
Second.
You have now?
And there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So I think our intention is not to let it drop completely, but we'll end up with some feedback for some tweaks after we've finished our strategic planning.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, can I ask you to get the lights? Please shed some light on the situation here.
I got it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're done with item number five. We're going to now move on to item number six, which is the discussion on the strategic plan review, mission, vision, values, SWOT analysis, and major topics. Alderman, Atech.
Yeah, and I'm going to turn this over to Laura. I think that the last time we discussed it, we were about ready to do some brainstorming and come up with some of our objectives. And so maybe that's where we are again tonight. Is that right, Laura?
Yes.
And could I ask, are we going to, I'm sure we're not going to complete this, but we'll cut it off at 10 o'clock?
Yep, good idea.
We also have an executive session, so we may want to cut it off sooner than that. And it's been a pretty intense discussion about the branding. I, one of the things that I would like to say about strategic planning is that it is so important to our future that I think that we really deserve to give it dedicated time when we know specifically, that's the only thing that we're going to do at that meeting. And then I'll give you a bunch of information to, as prep work, maybe homework to do ahead of time. And we'll know when we get there exactly what objectives that we're going to accomplish. I also want to point out that when we're missing three aldermen, that that's more than 20% of you. And the other thing that I think is really important in this process is that all voices are heard. And so I'd like to make sure that it's at a time when everyone has the ability to participate and everyone can make the commitment to participate. Is that something... That being said, I also wanted to share a process with you to see if you feel that this will be an effective process that will lead to goals. And those goals, and will set objectives that are related to those goals. I think that at some point in your process, you're going to want to bring in your department heads and maybe other subject matter experts who can assist not only with the preparation of those specific objectives that will help to accomplish the goals that you've identified, but certainly then the next step in the process is, once we have an objective, then you're going to have those functional groups come up with a very specific action plan as to how those things are going to be accomplished. And that's the way that this strategic plan is going to be different from the strategic plan that we currently have in place. It has laudable goals, but I don't think it's specific enough to be directing the day-to-day activities of the city. And it's hard to tell if we're winning or losing at trying to accomplish those goals. So going along with identifying our goals, objectives, and our action plans will be the establishment of metrics that we can use and be looking at from time to time to say, are we winning or are we losing? And so what we've done thus far, as you said, we've got some work that we've already done. We took a look at our mission, vision, and value statements. And I sent out a survey, and I received some responses. I didn't get everybody's response, so I really want to make sure that we have a conversation so that everybody's voice gets heard on whether we're really hitting the mark with those, because that's the foundation upon which everything else is built. And, you know, as we periodically review our strategic plan, our mission, vision, and value statements shouldn't change very much. They should be like our brand that doesn't change, but perhaps the way that we, the particular words that we use might change. And then the other thing that people provided me feedback on were the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And in that exercise, it's very important that before we identify what those major goals are in our strategic plan, that we understand what our environment is. And understanding our environment means we know what we're already doing well, and that we can capitalize upon when it comes to taking advantage of the external opportunities that exist and the external threats that might be trying to work against us in the future. But we also need to be extremely aware of what our weaknesses are for exactly the same reasons. That what are our weaknesses that will prevent us from taking advantage of opportunities that come our way? What are our weaknesses that might prevent us from protecting ourselves against the threats that we see on the horizon? And so that SWOT analysis becomes a very important discussion. And I foresee that as maybe the city council and the staff sitting together in blended teams and taking a look at that, and then coming back together for a plenary session where we share information about what we learned in our individual groups. I think there will be a lot of aha moments that come from an experience like that. The next thing is something, I've been doing a lot of research about what other groups have done to get from that step of the SWOT analysis to identifications of the major categories for the goals. And one of the things is a problem tree exercise, which is the identification of problems that we are trying to solve. What are the causes, the general causes of that? What are the root causes? And what do we foresee as the solutions? It helps to do the type of visioning of the future state that we're looking for in our community that will, not only will see categories of problems that exist, and those will probably come out and be the basis for the goals. Where you're looking at the causes and the root causes, those are probably going to be identification of some of the objectives that will be related to the resolution of making us be able to attain those goals. So I think the root cause analysis will also be breaking down, doing some group work together, and then coming back into a plenary session and identification of those goals and objectives. Once you formulate the goals and objectives, I think, as I said in the beginning, you hand that back to the senior staff and have them develop both action plans that are related to your goals and objectives, and then also their best attempts at saying how long it's going to take to accomplish those goals and what resources would be needed to accomplish those goals. We wrap that up in a nice bow, and I think we'll have ourselves a strategic plan.
So do you have timing on that?
So, from the beginning, I have said it is my goal to have the strategic planning process done in time to inform the 2019 budget. And so August is when the senior staff are making their plans, and September is when they're meeting with myself and finance so that we can put that into our budget and have our meetings with you in October and possibly November. But by the end of November, we like to have our following-year budget approved. So the target would be by the end of July to have this work done. I think that we can accomplish most of this work over the course of three meetings, that we set aside three hours and maybe leave early because we accomplished everything we needed to accomplish. But we set aside the three hours to make sure that we can do what we set forth to accomplish. Susan?
Laura, when I was reading through the SWOT analysis, and I've looked at other communities, et cetera, there are things that jump out at me as things that you can't change. So why are the, you know, like, the fact that we only have one bridge, why is that a reoccurring theme in a SWOT analysis? Isn't that just like a, it's a done deal, that's what it is? And so why do those things that are, you know, like, non-starters, why do they keep recurring?
Well, I think there was probably a time when we did only have one bridge, and now we have two.
Well, you know what I mean, though.
I do, I do. That, and... That... And sometimes putting a time and a resources needed is where we say, gee, we wish we could change that, but it's not something that we're gonna address in this five-year plan, Scott.
Just identify it to see how you're gonna handle it.
Right.
That's my point. It's a weakness.
Yes.
I mean, it... Just because maybe we don't have the resources to build a second bridge in town, or... But it's still an issue. And so how do... To your point, how do you plan around that?
Right.
How do you accommodate for that? I mean, it's still there.
You just can't ignore it.
Still an issue.
Can't do it.
Yeah, you can't ignore it.
And the other thing is, we will probably identify a number of objectives that would be a great idea if we had the resources to accomplish right away, but we don't, so we're gonna have to say no to some good ideas so that we can focus our energies and make sure that we accomplish what you've identified as the priorities.
Thank you.
Does it sound like a good process, good timeline? Okay, then what we'll do is we'll try to find those three dates and make those. Okay, thanks.
That's it for strategic plan for tonight?
Do you want any input in terms of, like, would we do these at a Wednesday night?
Yeah.
On some night that's not a council or a cow night, where we can, like, hone in on it?
That would be helpful. I wonder if the Monday, the second or fourth Monday might be a possibility for people.
Would it be worthwhile... You have staff, some senior staff there. Would it be worthwhile to have some Plan Commission members there, some historic preservation people there? I'm just saying, it may be not, but I'm just throwing it out there. Does it make sense to have some of the people that are also in key positions and, you know, to be part of that?
For parts of it. I mean, I think there's gonna be issues that are gonna be really important to have some input from them on certain things. When we're talking about community development or housing or that stuff, and also with our staff when we're talking about, you know, communications or technology or other things where they have direct input on... If we tell them to do something, you know, we can't tell them to do something they can't do. So I think that that is very important for us as we put these things together and identify some of the stuff that we're gonna have to bring other people in to get to those next steps when we wanna create an action plan and figure out, okay, is it something we can do in a year? Is it something we can do in five years? You know, to put that together, you have to think about who does it and how do we pay for it?
I think to Scott's point, I think that's almost a must-have because they're the step that's before us about making sure that we're all on the same sheet of paper. Now, it doesn't mean that there are a rubber stamp to it, but so long as they know where we're coming from, I think it'll prevent some of the hard feelings that happen at the last go-around with One North Washington, because I don't think they... I think we had our own vision and goals, and they weren't on the same sheet of paper with that. So it just produced some animosity with that. And there's no reason that we wouldn't, because if we're just trying to streamline and make sure that we're running the city as most efficiently as possible, we should have them in to make sure that their input's heard on it, too.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, let's go on to the next item, which is project status.
All right. This is a four-day week at the city offices, and so offices will be closed on Friday, March 30. Sierra Trading Post is up and running. Dollar Tree has received their certificate of occupancy, and they'll be opening on Thursday, March 29. We've also received a permit application to renovate the old Family Christian bookstore on Randall Road into a Domino's Pizza. Plan Commission on April 4 will have a variance for signs at the Windmill Creek Development that's at the southwest corner of Randall and Main. That is the new location where Cal-Joey's is going into Golden Corral. Staff met with a potential developer of the old greenhouse property that's on Walnut Street, and they are proposing townhomes for the sites. And community development is just extremely busy right now with development reviews and inquiries for a large number of development projects. So that's, on the one hand, really good news. On the other hand, those folks are working really hard to meet developers' demands. Also, Chris Easton has developed and uploaded to Survey Monkey a business retention survey, and he's also getting feedback from Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce on that. It is a number of questions that I think will provide us with excellent information and feedback on how businesses feel about their business being located in Batavia, how they see the economic forecast in being located here. And it'll also offer us the opportunity to sit down and have discussions with them about retaining them as a Batavia business and helping them grow. Also, staff conducted a formal business retention visit and plant tour at Moline Baring. You'll recall that there was somebody here from Moline Baring with the Chamber of Commerce, and that was a nice introduction. So we took the opportunity to get to know that business better. And then also, Chris attended the Spring Retail Real Estate Forum and Public-Privet Partnership Retail Program that was held in Rosemont last week, and said there was a tremendous amount of very valuable information that was gained there. And that's about it, unless people have other questions about project status.
Gotcha. So with the projects out on Kirk and Wind Energy?
Yes.
I didn't realize that Cal-Atlantic had been bought by Lennar.
Yes.
So what... Does that have any impact on, you know, on the project? Or, I mean, other than they have deeper pockets now? Does that do anything for...
Well, whenever, I think, whenever you have a mixture of portfolios, the concern is that there will be a different priority with a new organization as to which projects get built first and which get built later. And very early on, last November, the Cal-Atlantic folks came to us and said, absolutely, Lennar is... Wants to go full speed ahead with this project. So it was in all of our best interests to try to move that along. They can't wait to start digging over there.
It's my understanding that's coming to committee in April, right?
Yes.
Two things, Laura. One is, a resident asked me about the proposed duplexes, age-restricted duplexes by the middle school. And is it moving forward at all? Have we heard from that developer again after the initial presentations?
We have not received any further application from... That was the White Oaks.
Have we reached out to them at all to see what they're wanting to do?
We do. We touch base with them all the time. Just they have not submitted anything to us at this point.
And then the second thing is, there's been a lot of talk that Plato's Closet and New Uses are leaving the shopping centers. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike?
Whatever happened to the old gas station project on Wilson?
So the current owner of the property had brought us a conceptual design, but it wasn't anything... I think he was saying, is this something that if I found a developer for something like this that the city would be interested in? It was a lovely drawing. I mean, it was just really a beautiful brick building that would fit in nicely with the other buildings in our downtown. It'd be very... I think everybody would be excited about it. So we do... Again, we touch base with the property owner from time to time to see if there's any further activity. Chris, did I... Am I accurate there?
Come on, Chris.
Yeah, 'cause it was under my understanding they were gonna make a presentation this month, right?
That's what they told us. But we met with them in... Recently, as late January, they wanted us to kind of throttle up our review to present to the committee, the whole kind of the heart attack test. But their developer has kind of distanced himself from the property owner. And we asked him as recently as, like, last month, you know, what is going on? Because we needed to know what we're gonna have to present to the committee, the whole. And they said they're not ready to move ahead yet. So I think what we've got here is we've got an owner that bought the property from essentially out of receivership and got a good value on it, but is really not a developer, per se. He built a couple of townhome projects and done some remodeling, but he's not a developer. But he has associates that are, but the one that we talked to most recently has kind of gone silent on the project. So there's no saying. There's two caveats. One is, they do need to get a no further remediation letter that allows the tier-one objective for residential. They think they can get that, they expect to get it. But also, there's a covenant on the land owned by the former gas station company about prohibiting residential use. They need to get that letter from the... That former owner lifted. It's been recorded, and they're working at that as well. But I think that's partly slowed them down.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else, Marty?
Yeah, so Susan kind of brought it up with the whole Plato's Closet, and we've got all these things coming in, and some are leaving. It's kind of the Lord giveth and Lord taketh away.
Yes.
Some of the discussion that goes on about that, number one, the city does not control the rents, and the city will not subsidize businesses for the rents. Just to make sure that that's clear. But what I was gonna touch on is you had discussed the survey for the business retention. So I think that would be helpful in getting some of the message points as to what the non-speculative reasons are that businesses move or close, or any number of reasons. But I was going to ask about, I know we haven't done one since 2010, a city survey.
I was thinking of it today.
And we were kind of talking about it so that we're not wondering, is it this little group here? Or is it this group that wants to talk about this? Or is it 100 people on Nextdoor? Or is it 800 surveys that went out for this? Throw out another city survey again to really get a... Nobody's listening in pockets, which, I mean, what we do is we collectively pull all that all together. But I think we need a concerted effort to throw it out there and go, what's the community talking about? What... And it would help with our...
Absolutely.
SWOT analysis, you know? What's the... What are the residents concerned about? We might be going off of things that were concerns. Second Bridge, it's not a concern anymore because people of new here have gotten used to... They're not, but I'm just saying. I think it would be helpful.
I think a city survey is always a good idea, but keep in mind, it's not in this year's budget. And it is a very expensive thing to do. I don't remember how much they cost.
Yeah, I don't know. Were you happy with the prior process and the results that you received?
Part of the reason we did Streetscape.
Okay.
But we also had multiple years of survey results.
Right.
If we just have one survey for one year, I don't know how useful that data is. I'd be curious what, three years in a row, what people are saying.
Right. Well, that's a great point, because I think we've gotten so far out of it that I think we're going off of a lot of old data.
Right.
But like you're saying, there's gotta be different technology now out there that maybe isn't as expensive as it used to be. I would like to wonder what's out there. I'm not saying create a Survey Monkey for it.
And I guess I'd ask, why wouldn't you think about
creating a Survey Monkey instrument? Why wouldn't you think about creating a Survey Monkey instrument?
It's robust. Because I... Well...
I mean, first of all, not only is it very user-friendly... The hardest part we're having, Anthony's working with me on the business survey, is getting emails to the 3,000 businesses, you know? So we might prioritize high-employment people first. Or I... We're trying to work it out. But I think if you had a citywide survey and you publicized it...
Right.
Here's the web, here's the link, you know? Go to it. It's actually really, not only is it a cheap way to get the word out for people to click on and do the survey, but it will allow you to do all the query work. You know, it's built into the machine, you know? So you can put together these multipliers of, you know, why is this related to this? Where you see people that have been here for 10 years feel differently than people that have been here for five years. So you ask those questions about the survey respondent, and then you can make some correlations between their answers. I think, I don't know, Anthony, you're pretty adept at it. I think the Survey Monkey is something you should look at, because it is...
Do you have any idea if the older generation is...
Can they get at computers?
...claim to use it?
Yeah, I get that. But I'll tell you, I think it's... You're gonna... You might have some skewed because of access to computers. But, you know, I tell you, for these days, to send something out on paper, expect someone to check it off, even with a self-addressed stamped envelope, I just think it's so much more efficient to try the Survey Monkey.
Well, I'm not arguing that, but I can tell you that, you know, the older generation, they still send letters out. They still send, you know, I hope you're feeling better cards out, you know? Where they don't email people and tell them that. So I just... That's a consideration.
It's a...
I think this sounds like a great thing for an intern to do every summer for three years.
Well, you know, developing a survey, there's a talent to that, as you know. And if we're gonna really wanna use the data, the survey has to be developed well. And this, I guess this comes back to strategic planning, because when we talk to some of the strategic planning firms, surveying was part of the process. So now it's like... And I think what you presented tonight was fantastic, Laura. I mean, it's gonna be a really good process, but we do need data. And I feel like we're trying to do strategic planning piecemeal. It's still gonna cost money, and we may miss some expertise in here that we need to do. I mean, doing a survey to do it right, to get the information we need, is something we probably need to hire someone to do. So I just wanna put it out there that we may need to revisit at some point whether we really... Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't... To get the data, we need... We have to figure it out. And you talked about bringing experts in to help us with the strategic planning process at certain times. I mean, again, that's what the strategic planning firm would facilitate for us, and we'd be able to use their expertise also. So...
I think ideally, you'd do the community survey before you did the strategic plan. But I also ascribe to what you're saying that both the creation of a survey and the survey analysis and identifying those correlations, you get the best information that you can use for decision-making when professionals do that for you.
Laura, can I ask on that? So we have all those years, and I remember them.
And I've got the survey results.
Right, and a lot of them, they weren't unique. It was the same questions every year.
Right. We could just do that.
But a part of, to your point, what you're saying, if we did another survey and it was vastly different than those, then maybe we need to figure out, is it anomaly? Or start the three-year process? But if you run it and it's the same stuff, that it... Nothing's really changed, or you can identify some things that we now know are different, and then anecdotally know that to be true, because I think we're pretty plugged in. And the technology has come out nowadays a lot more in the past eight years that we're hearing a lot of the surveys at night from when people get home and they start trotting away.
So we're trying to, on the one hand, save a little bit of money this year. That is one way that we could do it. We could utilize the survey that had been done before, and you've got the multiple years' results from it.
Then you got something to compare with.
See what it looks like today.
Got baseline data.
Got baseline data. We can just do that and try to publicize it as much as possible.[1723.61]
And other responses, too, you'd be able to figure out, are we hitting the demographics in the community or not?
Yep.
I mean, and it'd be as simple as, do they have a, you know, a class once a week up at Homestead where, if you got them to do it, you could walk them all through there? I mean, I, they do it when they vote, so why wouldn't they do it on a survey?
I'll bring, I'll bring my laptop, sure.
You know they want, you know they want to be, you know, they want to be part of the community.
Dinner time. You show up at dinner time. I think. 4:30.
4:30. Okay. We beat up Survey Mark?
There.
I haven't been on 31 South in a while, and I was noticing today about all the missing markers. What was, what has the state said about 31 and the, the
The reflectors?
Reflectors?
Um, I don't know when they were going to be replaced, they did say springtime, they committed to that, um, but I will find out for you.
What year?
They didn't say what year.
Um, and Alderman, you're, I also wanted to let you know that I saw in the news that the IDNR and, and Illinois Department of Transportation are partnering to remove at least one of the dams in Danville.
Wow.
And, uh, Danville has experienced, I think, 17 fatalities over the years, so it does show that they're, um, providing the resources where they're the most dangerous dams, but at least they're starting, which is a good thing, so I'm keeping a close eye on that.
Thanks.
Elliot?
Just a quick question. I've been very happy to see that the, uh, dozers and excavators are out on the Seaman's Lot, actually tearing up the dirt and re-leveling it and moving some stuff around. Do we have any sort of updated timeline as to when they're expecting to, um, lay grass, lay green down? Because as I understood it, that was the next step before they could finally take the fences down.
I'll get a specific date for you. They were going to do it as soon as they could, um, with, given the weather.
Yeah.
So whenever, you know, the meteorologists say it's not going to kill the grass seed, then I think they want to do that, because they want to make it as attractive as possible in order to resell it.
Okay, um, Dan?
Just to clarify real quick on the Domino's, does that mean the fourth word is losing one, or we're getting a second one?
We don't have any word that the one on State Street would be closing, um, but I do know that those properties are for sale, the Domino's property and the former Furniture Dolly's location.
Susan?
Um, just a, a, a point of clarification. It seemed like at our last meeting that a few things came before us that were like, here's your only choice, and, 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 one of them was the recycling program. It was kind of like, it came to us as, okay, this is what we're going to do, either get on board or don't. We didn't have much in the way of options, we didn't have much, um, background information, we didn't know how successful, and have data that went along with it, what it, how it's worked in other towns, et cetera. We didn't know what the cost would be if we were to do a different type of collection. It just seemed like it was packaged in a way that's like, okay, here you go, city council, approve it. And, and that bothers me a little bit, because that's not been my experience in the past. We've always gotten more in terms of, okay, here are your options, and then, you know, here is why we support this one, but here's option number two and option number three. I also saw that in our liquidated damages for our leaf collection, um, machine, because again, the resolution was written, we already knew how much we were going to settle for, we already knew all of the parts of that before we had ever made it to council. So again, it, I felt like I was being spoon-fed the decision I was supposed to make, which bothers me as someone who is responsible for how the taxpayers' money is spent. So, um, I just feel like there's been a shift in terms of how things come to us, and when people accuse us of being a rubber-stamp council, when we only have one choice, we don't have any choice but to rubber stamp. So I would prefer to have more information than just like, okay, here's, here's this, here's what happened, here's what the liquidated, liquidated damages should have been, this is what we think we should settle on, okay, here's the resolution, it's already been written, approve it, we're moving on. And, and so, those are the kind of things where I'm like, eh, not so fast. And so, um, you know, I, I have talked to other council members about it to see if it was just my perception. Um, I've gotten similar responses from other council members, so I don't know how we've kind of steered off of a more, like, choice, uh, in terms of how we make decisions.
So one of the things that we try to do as staff is, um, our approach to, when we bring something to you, is to identify the pros, identify the cons, and then provide you with, um, a recommendation based upon the expertise that a senior staff member can provide to you, but leave the choice to you. With regard to the liquidated damages provision, one of the things that, um, was not part of the discussion, but was part of the memo, was the, um, the seeking advice of legal counsel.
Right, no, we, we talked about it.
And so the
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. And so the advice of legal counsel was the difficulty in collecting, um, those type of liquidated damages where they don't bear a rational relationship to the damages that occurred. And, um, with regard to the recycling of the household hazardous waste, um, I think that, that the approach there was, there is a tremendous advantage to being able to be a subscriber to a system that has hired their own administration, and for the city not to have to have the administrative burdens of that. But we certainly could have said, if we decided that we wanted to be household hazardous waste haulers, or, um, hire a company ourselves just to service Batavia alone, that could have been an option. I think that was the direction to Scott, was to investigate some of those possibilities, but I can advise that they should do that. And please point out to me, I, you know, staff certainly doesn't, we are not here to steer your decisions, we are here to provide you with all of the information that you need to make the best decisions possible, while also offering the recommendation of subject matter experts as to, you know, a prudent course of action.
I, I want to thank you for bringing that up, because to the, to the point about the recycling, that was the reason why I was a no on it, um, for the reason of Alan brought up a very good suggestion at the COW. And while I understand the, you know, the, the, the litigated, or the damages, liquidated damages are a little bit different discussion, I think it goes a little bit more towards what I think Dave has said previously on having discussions at the COW. When we get to city council, we all understand that it's been hashed out, and that's the time that we're, um, that we're having the, well, did we think of, are we, do we? So that it's all said and done. This is where we are supposed to be saying, you know what? I don't think we're ready to vote on this yet. I mean, and if we do take the votes, and everybody is okay with the one option, like Susan and I talked about, that we're fine with that, too. But I think we want to see a little more creativity, which goes to, I think, some of what Dave has been saying, what he's talking about, some unease, that maybe we should be talking about this in committees a little bit more. I disagree with that, because we're all here at one time, it's the most efficient way. How we're doing it, it doesn't matter if we're asked, if we're talking about it in a COW, or in smaller committee groups. If we're not willing to, at the committee, challenge options, thinking about things differently, if we don't have that mindset, it doesn't matter how we do it. And it's not, it is not, it is not against staff or relying upon their expertise. We are being presented with the information, we're taking our diverse backgrounds and saying, well, have you thought about, and maybe there should be at times, because there's no rush to get some of this stuff done.
Right.
You know what? Before we go back to the next, um, before it goes on to the council, let's discuss it, because this is the part where we are supposed to be discussing it.
Have a, and just to throw in on that, one of the things that I, you know, and I think staff for the most part does a really good job, but one of the things that I want to drive home with them is that there, we need every available option to us, or at least be as transparent as possible with everything, because it should never, there should never be point of blame that goes to the staff. There should never be point of blame. That should always come to us. And, and the remedy to that is other people get elected.
Yep.
Honestly, that's, that's how it goes. So, you know, I mean, that, that is, we need, we want to make sure that, that, you know, there are no agendas, and, none that I can think of, but the fact is, we just want to drive home that staff needs to give us everything they can, be as transparent as possible, and, and so we can hash it out, and if we make, if we make the wrong choice, then it's on us, then it's on us, period.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? Okay, I got a quick one.
Yes.
Since this just all came up and a lot of discussion, and a lot of discussion about having more discussion, there's been discussion about possibly starting the meetings at 7:00. So without a lot of discussion, would somebody like to make a motion that we start the committee of the whole meetings at 7:00?
Second.
So we got a motion by Cal Han, second by Salvati, so we'll do a roll call.
We can discuss it first.
We can have discussion now if you want.
Yeah. Are we going to put, like you said, a time limit on it to where 10:00, and we start wrapping it up?
I think, you know, if you guys don't mind, I think you've seen my, my intent is to do that, but if you don't mind, as long as I'm sitting here, I'd like to have that flexibility, that if we're in the middle of something that it just has to be handled, we can't cut it off at 10:00.
Right, right, I understand that.
But the intent would be 10:00.
So that's why we want to start earlier.
That's right.
Well, then when, when we do need to hammer on something and really have a great discussion on it, we don't have to feel pressured that, you know, we're just going to have to ignore that for another month, or we're not going to get to spend any time on this. You know, we can, if we start earlier, we're gonna, I think we're going to be better stewards of the time that we spend on things.
Right. Anybody else? Roll call.
Cal Han? Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden, absent. Rosato?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Anne Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien, absent. Motion carried.
All right, thank you for that. I think it'll just make it better for staff and the public and everybody, instead of some meetings being at 7:00 and some being at 7:30, we just make it 7:00 and we're done with it.
It applies to committee of the whole, but not to city council.
Correct.
Okay, I just, that's
Yeah. Okay, then we're going to move on to others is done, I guess. So we're going to move on to executive session for the purpose of sale of real estate. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Ewer, second by Stark, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There won't be any action coming out of, uh, executive session.